I'd like to call this meeting the order and welcome everybody. Glad you are here tonight. This is our regular November meeting and we welcome each one of you here tonight. As far as announcements, we have, I think, there's a couple of things I believe I left a notice of at your receipt. The Hospice House Foundation is inviting each of you to their Go On Your Own Check presentation that will take place over at 272 Maple Street. I guess most of us know that as a drawing house. That's on the 21st of November at 2:00 in the afternoon. They'd ask that all commissioners could attend that. And in addition, I've got a note from Steven Baldwin as to his evil fourth month because that's where his son Andrew, that's Saturday, December the 14th, and that's at 4:00 in Cowee Baptist Church. And you can see the disaster I made from guys aware of it. I think there's going to be individual invitations in the mail.
I got that. Okay. Any other questions?
Right. Any of the others, Commissioner Haven?
The only thing I seen is a motorcycle out here in the park watching. Be careful who they're driving. Don't freeze that. You're running up.
I think it might be your friends, Frank's friends reporting I'm here. You don't freeze that. All right. No, warning to you, have you, Commissioner Beal, come in now?
On the 15th, if somebody correct me if I'm wrong on this date, Ms. Margaret Ramsey, you know her daughter is battling pancreatic cancer. It's pancreatic cancer awareness month and they'll be approving the 15th. I think it's 5:00 at the gazebo. Somebody correct me if that's wrong.
You find the calendar.
If it's 5:00, just say 5:00. But if you can attend, a lot of folks in our community suffer from this deadly cancer. So I think you work your time, spend some time. I literally look more than that.
Commissioner Beal? Yeah. Yes. We have, Macon County has always had a strong agriculture influence in this state and we're proud that that continues. We have two grand champion winners from the North Carolina State Fair and we wanted to recognize them as board commissioners tonight. We're so proud of them and want to give them some recognition. Katie Gibson, is Katie here? Come up here, Katie.
First time you learn.
Right here. Katie, this is Katie Gibson from Macon County Board of Commissioners. She was a winner at the North Carolina State Fair, the Boyne Red Grand Champion Steer 2013. And we're presenting this today, November the 12th, 2013, by the Macon County Board of Commissioners and just to let her know how proud we are of her and her accomplishments and to say thank you for representing Macon County well. So. All right. Thank you very much. And I've asked, we can't run it back. That's hard to do.
Don't go anywhere because I want one of all, most of the kids to think.
Okay. And I've asked Commissioner Beal to present the other one, please.
The Macon County Fire Association is proud for these young folks more than you ever know. So AJ, if you'll come forward. This is presented to Mr. AJ Carpenter. He was the winner at the North Carolina State Fire Grand Champion Steer for 2013. And we've led direction by the Macon County Board of County Commissioners. You've never been to the state fair and know how competitive this class is and what these kids do and how hard they work with their animals. So we're proud of AJ, Katie, and these other young folks that are involved in this steer program to Macon County Fire Association. So AJ, congratulations.
Get all four of us in here. Right second. Second you get. All right. Very good. Let's thank these kids. Thank you, guys, for being here. You can stick around if you'd like to. If I were you, I would not. Just tell, just tell them you like it is. Just being honest. Commissioner Tate has requested some time to recognize a retired member from the planning board. And so Commissioner Tate, we recognize you this time. And Commissioner Tate is our latest on to the planning board.
One of the things that you learn as a commissioner is that the people behind the scenes make life a lot easier than they can make it a lot more difficult. You have great employees for the county that are paid to do this and you have phenomenal volunteers like Mr. Glassley played this time. Carl, as you know, you became chairman of the planning board about the same time you became a commissioner. We were given an unidual task of working on somewhat of a tumultuous situation of trying to resurrect a planning board. I couldn't have done it without you. I appreciate your time and your service as well to us as a gentleman. So all we did this time tonight to thank you, bring you up here and give you this extremely high dollar gift. Come on up.
Yep. Thank you, Carl. Carl, we are.
How long would you still hold the planning board?
Somebody else.
I don't know if you into it, so let's see.
You served as chairman two years.
Ronnie Beal was a thin young gentleman.
That's 1974. Carl, I will say this, when I came on this board and when I became chairman, I don't think there was any, no doubt anybody's mind, the planning board was a very controversial board. There was a lot of back and forth between commissioners and the planning board. And my goal was to settle that down to make the planning board a board that wasn't controversial that worked for the citizens of this county. And I think you took that a long way toward that. And as a friend, I appreciate that. I appreciate your elevated guidance of that board and another mission on there. So that's just a purpose. Thank you for me, you a lot of Macon County. Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
I appreciate that and I appreciate you every commissioner working with the planning board when I fall out chairs, they were one of them. And I appreciate that. Good job.
Thanks, sir. Every show. Thanks, Carl. Number three, I think Commissioner Haven brought Max Tej in a video. And then we have Paul Carlson and Bill Dyer, you're a front of Land Trust, so should we recognize them? Turn it over to you guys.
Thank you so much. And 10 days ago, we had our annual event of LTLT. We held it at Cowee School. And once a year, we give a constipation senior award that we don't give lightly and we decide to give it to the Macon County Commissioners for your supporters of the store, Cowee School, now the Lake County Area Center. Every one of you had a good experience not to be there. Appreciate Commissioner Haven, you coming out, which you got your picture in the paper and looking at it. We excited and appreciate you guys back. This is the award that was presented to all you commissioners and it's a historic photo of the Cowee School with a flag stating the Macon County Board of Commissioners, Robert Virginia Ramsey, your constipation senior award from the Land Trust of North Tennessee, wherever 2013. So I'm glad you're a commission.
We'll receive that on behalf of the board and thank you very much for that. We appreciate what you do. Mr. Dyer, you know what, I thank you and all the high school track and football coaches. Appreciate you very much. So thank you, guys.
Now, thank you. We need to say that the board that really started, I think I'm the one left from that original board, if you remember people like Charlie Edman, Bobby Cooper, and Beal.
Thank you very much, guys. This board has always recognized a moment of silence and I understand Supreme Court is in the process of trying that as we speak, but until they outlaw that or tell us we can, we're going to observe a moment of silence to allow ourselves to focus on the important things. We ask you to stand and resist that moment of silence. After that, I'm asking Commissioner Keaton, if he would, please, to please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Three things to do.
Please await. The United States is America and to the public, the states, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a public hearing scheduled for 6:15 and I believe it is right at 6:15 so we can, Mike, I think we can proceed with that. This is future transportation program application. Kim Angel is our director of Macon Transit. And Kim, we recognize you this time. So we'll, I guess, in terms of ourselves, Kim.
Do you play a public hearing?
Public hearing is open and no one, no one signed up to speak to that except yourself.
Not in the silent five percent of practice. The first order of business is, I went to that school, I would be glad to hang out with you. And you can do this with any time.
You're a Cowee schooler.
I am. I am here tonight to discuss the purpose of public hearing as we still have the public know. This is the fiscal year 2015 grant application. I believe that we're talking about July 14 through June 15, 2015. This grant is 5311. What it does is support the administrative activities of the Transit Services Department. And the grant we've had for many years pays 85% of administrative staff salaries, fund bills, advertisement, such as that. It also includes what we plan on asking for, and you'll see the capital is about 364,000. For not to exceed that, that's a really rough estimated number right now and the reason that it's so high is the plans are to ask for two replacement vehicles. We have two that will have aged out at that point in time and will need to be replaced. Our radio system is almost 10 years old, but the vehicles we're looking at upgrading to be a digital radio system. We have some issues with some perception and things like that. So I'm hoping that while there's some other communications, I know that's an ongoing issue with the Transit Service as well, so maybe they'll go along with that. And also what we are hoping to be able to do is have a needs study done during this fiscal year to determine if it is feasible to expand the Transit Services building. And the reason why is last year we took what was our training and conference room and divided it into offices. Therefore, we have lost some storage space in each type of training area that we have. We have increased our staff. We have increased in service by 50% over the last three years. And I think the growth warrants this and we're hoping by expanding that we will be able to get another. We've been in the building about 10 years, so hopefully by this point is how that building is, I'll be retired, it'll be somebody else's.
You've been in that building how long?
We've been in the building about 10 years. Well, to be, we moved in in 2002. It'll be 11 years. It was 11 years and so we got our grand, our grand opening. It's perfectly built. We just want to perfectly do a little bit more on to allow for some expansion in the building, you know, based on the growth that we've had. The fact that the federal government is doing a lot of the safety and security measures and we have to provide more training. Right now, we have to go off site for these training and boards. So that's kind of, that's the plan. Now, that again is contingent upon getting any study done and any of the studies being justified. But I need to go ahead and present it in my budget because it's due this year, the grant application. Worst case scenario, save us a minute. And so that is the, the grand total for those two, the administrative capital will not exceed, and again, I keep saying that because the capital, I don't have all of my finances as of today, I will have them in the book, but it will not exceed 553,531. And the total share for county funds would be 55,000, 53 at the moment.
That's made a start of mention.
It would be. This is next year, so we're looking at next year's budget. You know, again, whatever revenues we have, we, we've got double vehicles that will surplus and then we replace vehicles for surplus and that goes back in the system. So whatever funds there are available for us are the funds that we use. Typically, we do not have as much as $20 as is approved for maximum rate because we do, it's usually seven to 90% of our production, which is much less than the actual 100%. And so what I'll be doing is asking that you pass this resolution to allow the county manager to iterate to the contract once that happens. It will go obviously to the board of transportation history, so we'll be hoping to turn for the next specific, not for sure. And then I'll be glad to catch your input, yes?
What's your total budget, Kim? I forgot. Total budget, everything.
Depending on what year it is and what capital items I have, administrative and operating alone usually runs about 400, 450,000. Capital could be anywhere from 40,000 to 400,000.
So your total cost of investment?
Total program, yeah. About 300, about 780,000.
And then you read your fees, rider fees. What's your income?
So they, we get these from our contracts. We have contracts, the DSS, the management contracts with like the nursing clinics and places like that. We get grant funds from this state, we get federal grant funds, and then we have a bear because it's just October. In between all of those, we usually get about, like I said, 90% of our own revenues and from the general funds, 10% of us. Last fiscal year, 13, the budget was about 700,000, 900,000.
Is that in addition to that? Did you just wait to spend that or is that included in your, how do you, how do you account for your income?
I don't actually.
Yeah, is that?
I'm not sure.
Revenue rider fee.
Rider fee. Yeah, rider fee. That's included in.
That's included. It's a revenue item.
I think he was looking for what was your rider fee proportion of your revenue with rider fees.
Well, somewhere between 30 and 40,000.
Total for everything?
Yes. It is a separate line item in there. It is kind of hard because sometimes it's some of the other things do because the way we got to put them in there, if we made a separate line item for everything, we have 45 different line items we kind of sit in.
But Kim, that line doesn't include like transportation cost, they would have to admit to it.
No, those are, we have our own revenue accounts set up. So you can tell us specifically in transit what our revenue is. And most usually if it's not, we have a, we have a one that's called Transit Services and these, and that's kind of the catch all of the, any additional, that's what our fare is. Small contracts, we have contracts to both of these counties and they're setting a whole lot of it. So that number that I gave you was just passing.
Okay. One more question. Can you get, can you get a comment? Comment, very, thank you. We need a motion. Motion, motion, hearing. Thank you. Tate, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Owe. And that motion passes. Thank you, Kim. Thank you for what you did. Number six, fill the comment period. According to my sheet, we did not have anyone sign up for the comment. Is there anyone here that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to say something in the public comment? Hearing, see no one. We'll move on to adjustments and approval of the agenda. Gentlemen, you have the agenda in front of you. Do we have anything you'd like to delete? Can we agenda change or a motion to approve the agenda would be in, Mr. Andrew Young here.
Just one thing, Mr. Trump, under the form of, I have brought back the name that I told for, I would check with, a previous member of the Area Agency of Aging. So I have my.
Chairman, I have one addition to consideration. Okay. Back in, I believe, either August or September, the board concluded contract for Kim Angel with the State Department of Transportation for a veterans transportation program, multi tenant program. That contract was approved. I'll make motion on that. The contract that was presented and approved, however, failed to include an attachment A or an appendix A, which was the budget summary, which is referred to in that document. The numbers are consistent with what was in that document. We've got to send this back to the state and assure them that the entire thing was properly approved, so the law for y'all consider giving the authority to attach it to the contract and approve the agenda.
Where do we put that?
We're, we're.
I'm doing that.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Owe. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trump. Thank you for what you did. Number three, I think Commissioner Haven brought Max Tej in a video. And then we have Paul Carlson and Bill Dyer, you're a front of Land Trust, so should we recognize them? Turn it over to you guys.
Thank you so much. And 10 days ago, we had our annual event of LTLT. We held it at Cowee School. And we, once a year, we give a constipation senior award that we don't give lightly and we decide to give it to the Macon County Commissioners for your supporters of the store, Cowee School, now the Lake County Area Center. Every one of you had a good experience not to be there. Appreciate Commissioner Haven, you coming out, which you got your picture in the paper and looking at it. We excited and appreciate you guys back. This is the award that was presented to all you commissioners and it's a historic photo of the Cowee School with a flag stating the Macon County Board of Commissioners, Robert Virginia Ramsey, your junior constipation senior award from the Land Trust of North Tennessee, whoever, 2013.
So I'm glad you're a commission. We'll receive that on behalf of the board and thank you very much for that. We appreciate what you do. Mr. Dyer, you know what, I thank you and all the high school track and football coaches. Appreciate you very much. So thank you, guys.
Now, thank you. We need to say that the board that really started, I think I'm the one left from that original board, if you remember people like Charlie Edman, Bobby Cooper, and Beal.
Thank you very much, guys. This board has always recognized a moment of silence and I understand Supreme Court is in the process of trying that as we speak, but until they outlaw that or tell us we can, we're going to observe a moment of silence to allow ourselves to focus on the important things. We ask you to stand and resist that moment of silence. After that, I'm asking Commissioner Keaton, if he would, please, to please observe a moment of silence. Thank you. Three things to do. Please await. Thank you. Three things to do.
Please await. The United States is America and to the public, the states, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a public hearing scheduled for 6:15 and I believe it is right at 6:15 so we can, Mike, I think we can proceed with that. This is future transportation program application. Kim Angel is our director of Macon Transit. And Kim, we recognize you this time. So we'll, I guess, in terms of ourselves, Kim.
Do you play a public hearing?
Public hearing is open and no one, no one signed up to speak to that except you except yourself, so.
I'm in the silent five percent of practice. The first order of business is, I went to that school, I would be glad to hang out with you. And you can do this with any time.
You're a Cowee schooler.
I am. I am here tonight to discuss the purpose of public hearing as we still have the public know. This is the fiscal year 2015 grant application. I believe, I believe that we're talking about July 14 through June 15, 2015. This grant is 5311. What it does is support the administrative activities of the Transit Services Department. And the grant we've had for many years pays 85% of administrative staff salaries, fund bills, advertisement, such as that. It also includes what we plan on asking for, and you'll see the capital is about 364,000. For not to exceed that, that's a really rough estimated number right now and the reason that it's so high is the plans are to ask for two replacement vehicles. We have two that will have aged out at that point in time and will need to be replaced. Our radio system is almost 10 years old, but the vehicles we're looking at upgrading to be a digital radio system. We have some issues with some perception and things like that. So I'm hoping that while there's some other communications, I know that's an ongoing issue with the Transit Service as well, so maybe that'll go along with that. And also what we are hoping to be able to do is have a needs study done during this fiscal year to determine if it is feasible to expand the Transit Services building. And the reason why is last year we took what was our training and conference room and divided it into offices. Therefore, we have lost some storage space in each type of training area that we have. We have increased our staff. We have increased in service by 50% over the last three years. And I think the growth warrants this and we're hoping by expanding that we will be able to get another. We've been in the building about 10 years, so hopefully by this point is how that building is, I'll be retired, it'll be somebody else's.
You've been in that building how long?
We've been in the building about 10 years. Well, to be, we moved in in 2002. It'll be 11 years. It was 11 years and so we got our grand, our grand opening. It's perfectly built. We just want to perfectly do a little bit more on to allow for some expansion in the building, you know, based on the growth that we've had. The fact that the federal government is doing a lot of the safety and security measures and we have to provide more training. Right now, we have to go off site for these training and boards. So that's kind of, that's the plan. Now, that again is contingent upon getting any new study done and any of the studies being justified. But I need to go ahead and present it in my budget because it's due this year, the grant application. Worst case scenario, save us a minute. And so that is the, the grand total for those two, the administrative capital will not exceed, and again, I keep saying that because the capital, I don't have all of my finances as of today, I will have them in the book, but it will not exceed 553,531. And the total share for county funds would be 55,000, 53 at the moment.
That's made a start of mention.
It would be. This, this is next year, so we're looking at next year's budget. You know, again, whatever revenues we have, we, we've got double vehicles that will surplus and then we replace vehicles for surplus and that goes back in the system. So whatever funds there are available for us are the funds that we use. Typically, we do not have as much as $20 as is approved for maximum rate because we do, it's usually seven to 90% of our production, which is much less than the actual 100%. And so what I'll be doing is asking that you pass this resolution to allow the county manager to iterate to the contract once that happens. It will go obviously to the board of transportation history, so we'll be hoping to turn for the next specific, not for sure. And then I'll be glad to catch your input, yes?
What's your total budget, Kim?
Depending on what year it is and what capital items I have, administrative and operating alone usually runs about 400, 450,000. Capital could be anywhere from 40,000 to 400,000.
So your total cost of investment?
Total program, yeah. About 300, about 780,000.
And then you read your, your fees, rider fees. What's your income?
So they, we get these from our contracts. We have contracts, the DSS, the management contracts with like the nursing clinics and places like that. We get grant funds from this state, we get federal grant funds, and then we have a bear because it's just about 100%. In between all of those, we usually get about, like I said, 90% of our own revenues and from the general funds, 10% of us. Last fiscal year, 13, the budget was about 700,000, 900,000.
Is that in addition to that? Did you just wait to spend that or is that included in your, how do you, how do you account for your income?
I don't actually.
Yeah, is that?
I'm not sure.
Revenue rider fee.
Rider fee. Yeah, rider fee. That's included in.
That's included. It's a revenue item.
I think he was looking for what was your rider fee proportion of your revenue with rider fees.
Well, somewhere between 30 and 40,000. Total for everything? Total for everything.
Yeah, that was in, but I just don't.
Yes. It is a separate line item in there. It is kind of hard because sometimes it's some of the other things do because the way we got to put them in there, if we made a separate line item for everything, we have 45 different line items we kind of sit in.
But Kim, that, that line doesn't include like transportation cost, they would have to admit to it.
No, those are, we have our own revenue accounts set up. So you can tell us specifically in transit what our revenue is. And most usually if it's not, we have a, we have a one that's called Transit Services and these, and that's kind of the catch all of the, any additional, that's what our fare is. And we have contracts to both of these counties and they're setting a whole lot of it. So that number that I gave you was just passing.
Okay. One more question. Can you get, can you get a comment?
Comment, very, thank you. We need a motion. Motion, motion, hearing.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Owe. And that motion passes. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you did. Number six, fill the comment period. According to my sheet, we did not have anyone sign up for the comment. Is there anyone here that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to say something in the public comment?[1542.12]
We just broke claims in, like, you know, and services and gives to a lot of folks. And I guess they'd be home, but I really don't know. It's a good type of program, thank you. So it's a great program. They do a good job. It's not an age program to begin, you might imagine, with that huge payout and that big climate. So it's probably going to get a...
People are hurt. People go out, they're going to be more people hurt. And people get into their area. They start, and I'm not opposed to a small camp right now, but as we see more and more programs cut, not just in your department, you deal with it, and you see it up in all areas. At some point, I think the county just goes, hey, we can't, we can't take up this slash from the federal, I guess, managed federal or state government. But during the interim, I really don't have a problem with this amount. But at some point, we need to really, you know, look, it's going to be tough. And you provide a valuable service to a lot of people, a lot of, and the people are going to suffer, they're suffering most now, the poor and the disadvantaged. That's the ones that are going to run the whole thing. It's very hard out, but at some point, it's going to be tough.
Any other discussion? You're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you. And if you need that money right away, understand, Chuck. So whatever it takes to get them the money.
Send me a letter, Chuck.
Chuck, will you get a, your convenience, so if you feel contacted, you want to discuss the... Part shop, part department, you want to keep the budget? Want to go for discussions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Tate requests to be on the agenda and update on the radio communications consulting service that we discussed last meeting. I'm going to pass this off to Isaiah Key, who brings us to speaking, and I will supplement that thing there. That's the date, great question.
Thanks, Neil. Unfortunately, I'm here in very bad mood, but if you have just a little view, just kind of play-by-play where we are right now in this consulting thing. That's what's meeting. We all basically approved the low bid. We went up and requested quotes from these consultants. Both consulting firms were given the same information of what they wanted the input to be, and they came with a low price. We elected to go with the lower price. When I contacted that company and told them that we had the low, that they had perceived a lower price and with their bid, now I request this in the contract, and that's going to be a contract along with stuff for work. In that scope of work, it was not entirely different, but they left out three very important things out of the scope of work that we wanted to do. One was that we wanted it to be a countywide analysis, and they limited it to owners and the fire departments, which there's no way they could meet with all of, all of our primary meetings. And I, we asked them to do three meetings, one in each of the outline districts and one in the Franklin area. And the other one was that they would analyze all of our tower sites, and they limited it to three tower sites that we have to abide by. So when I spoke with them and asked them to bring their scope of work back to where we had discussed previously, and that's what we asked them to price, they adjusted it, but they also adjusted the price, and that's the 8,416,000 acres. That didn't set well with being a work performance. So we reached out to the second bid that we had. And on our phone conversation with him, I bid their scope of practice, and it, it was fairly similar. I told him some of the things that we had heartburn with the other company. He said, that's without a no problem. We'll, we'll make this changes, make sure that that's worded correctly in scope of work. And I said, you know, by the way, you weren't below the price, and that was probably what hurt you most. So if you can help in that way at all, we would appreciate it. He came back with countywide system, even look at all five tower sites. He adjusted it to three visits throughout the county, and he discounted his original price by 4,000. Which unfortunately, because the other one was so low, he came up, and this one was so high, he came down there, they're within 10% of each other. But those are, those are the prices that we're at right now. You know, if we went with Mission Porters, that's about a $3,500 increase.
Federal Engineering is 34.7.
Well, I think it's 31.263.
Just help me understand, what, what was the difference? I mean, we got the bid. What's the difference? When you went back to it, what was different in their, what made you go up on the price?
When we originally asked them, when we originally asked them for prices, we gave them the same information. Mr. Footland wanted to check out their whole system, a lot of knowledge, we met with their sales. Everybody that was in that original leaning knows that that communication was passed back and forth. But when they put it in writing, is when the, when the ideas changed.
They did not give you an accurate bid?
Kevin, they actually, they gave the bid, but then they presented a contract that was inconsistent with the recollection of David and others that were looking at it.
So they didn't really give you the...
And that, that contract did have the ability to do those other things, treat it as options, though you pay additional sums of money for it, which were pretty substantial. Basically, they changed it.
But that didn't, that didn't sound like they bid on what we asked for.
Well, they gave bid on it, but the contract just doesn't match up with what the discussion was. It was an oral process.
They sort of liked the Justin painters. I had a painting I hired one time. You give me the best bid on paint in this house, till we got almost through and anyone makes a lot of paint, they look trim around the windows, you know, that sort of thing.
That's what I'm saying, they didn't give you an accurate bid on what you asked them to do. So I, I can't seem to do that. So what do you, Jim, what are you recommending?
Unfortunately, it's a bad news to pay a little money, but I recommend we have switched Mission Porters. I think they've already shown the willingness to work with Making County and reduce the price. They actually have, in their contract, which we're looking at this time, has everything in there that we requested.
This budget already for that.
Hard to...
All right. Then by two, you're only 35, 35,000.
I don't have a difference.
28, 26, 27, 31, 63.
It was taken from the...
Taking from your team's...
39.
The difference, well, the amount of less than federal bid is 35, but the actual difference between what you've already approved and what they've been doing is 48,000.
48,000. So you need to budget it.
The whole thing came back to me. Is this Mission, is this the group that would make, recommend, sold their equipment?
No, this, this is a completely independent company as well.
Yeah. There was another...
There was, and it was State Communications, which we did not receive the bid from because they excluded themselves. They said it would not be by us and would be selling equipment.
Is this be the last unbudgeted item for EMS this year?
And, and, you know, this, this, this is more emergency services versus emergency benefit services.
My boy, yeah. Okay. Maybe the guy with the hat. Me, yes. We have a motion from Mr. Tate, second, Mr. Haven, to approve, I guess, rightfully approve the additional provision allowance and instructions to Mission Porters.
And I see the application withdraw the authority in the contract.
And that may be taken from Mr. Tate's... Any other discussion on that? Here you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you, Dave. Under new business, we have Sheriff Robbie Hall and also the interment manager, Mike Decker. This will be the bids on patrol vehicles. And gentlemen, we can have that information packaged. Sheriff.
Basically, this is the funds that you all approved back in the July budget. And Franklin Ford has received, we received the low bid. Franklin Ford was the part dealership that supplied the low bid. We're just asking for you to accept them as the bid.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is not brought back before the board. They have to, they're suing the low bid unless there's something wrong with the, with the bid. It's not brought back before the board, can we?
And I guess for the information I don't have...
I think it is appropriate for the board to...
Since you're actually interviewing...
It's a formal bid.
Yeah, it's a formal bid. I think the board should.
We have a motion. We have seven. We have seven. Under 90,000. In discussion?
175.
172 something.
Yeah, 172.
Bid, one close, three times, 178. Franklin Ford, we have Brian Rowers from Franklin Ford here. The comments, Mr. Rouse. No comments. Appreciate the low bid.
Thank you.
And that is under the budget amount of my figure.
I believe so.
Any other radios?
Yeah, that is only...
That's just for vehicles.
Only for the vehicles. Except the equipment that goes in the bid, they just suck the money.
Pretty close, I'm going to go. But anything that's not speaking, we will back it up. We have motion in second to approve the bid to Franklin Ford for six vehicles, please. Can you say that? Here's the exception, they're on. Five, seven. Oh, they fast car, they're pretty fast. We'll test it out.
Just a little bit of additional information, so for Ronnie and Mr. Haven and Mr. Higgin. The county garage helps us to decide which vehicles to replace. And so they, they make, it's not like I go pick which option to give the vehicle. The vehicles that need to come off of the road, the garage makes the decision, or which vehicles come off the road, we accept their decision.
How many you got there?
I mean, you...
How many patrol cars you got there?
Oh, still the same amount, but I didn't think I was going to be asked that question. I'd be guessing, I'd say... I'm guessing I'd say 42. So about 150, 160,000 pounds.
...farmers and the fire departments, which there's no way they could meet with all of our fire management meetings. We asked them to do three meetings, one in each of the outline districts and one in the Franklin area. And the other one was that they would analyze all of our tower sites and they had limited to three tower sites and we have to abide by. So when I spoke with them and asked them to bring their scope of work back to where we had discussed previously, and that's what we asked them to price, they adjusted it, but they also adjusted the price, and that's the $8,416. That didn't set well with being a work performance. So we reached out to the second bid that we had, and on our phone conversation with him, I bid their scope of practice, and it was fairly similar. I told him some of the things that we had heartburn with the company. He said, "That's really no problem. We'll make those changes, make sure that that's worded correctly in scope of work." And I said, "Well, he weren't above his price, and that was probably what hurt you most. So if you can help in that way at all, we'd appreciate it." He came back with county-wide system, he went up at all five tower sites, he adjusted it to three visits throughout the county, and he discounted his original price by $4,000. Which unfortunately, because the other one was so low, he came up, and this one was so high, he came down, they're within 10% of each other. But those are the prices that we're at right now. If we went with Mission Porters, that's about a $3,500 increase.
Bottom line, Federal Engineering's is $34.7.
Bottom line, it's $31.263.
Just help me understand, what was the difference? I mean, we got the bid, what's the difference? When you went back to it, what was different? What made you go from the price?
When we originally asked them for prices, we gave them the same information. Mr. Footle wanted us to check out our whole system, bottom line, we met with ourselves. Everybody that was in that original meeting knows that that communication was passed back and forth, but when they put it in writing is when the ideas changed.
They did not give you an accurate bid?
Kevin, actually, they gave the bid, but then they presented a contract that was inconsistent with the recollection of David and others that were looking at it. That contract did have the ability to do those other things, treat it as options, though that you pay additional sums of money for, which were pretty substantial. Basically, they changed it.
But that didn't sound like they bid on what we asked for.
Well, they gave bid on it, but the contract just doesn't match up with what the discussion was. It was an oral process.
Let's add that one. They sort of like the Justin Painters. I had a painting I hired one time. You give me the best bid on paint in this house, tell me you got almost through with any one of those paintings, they look trim around the windows, you know, that sort of thing.
That's what I'm saying, they didn't give you an accurate bid on what you asked them to do. So I can't see doing that. So what do you, Jim, what are you recommending?
Unfortunately, it's a bad thing to pay a little money, but I recommend to switch to Mission Porters. I think they've already shown the willingness to work with making change in the price. They actually have, in their contract, which we're looking at this time, has everything in there that requests it.
This budget already go with that.
Pardon?
All right, then by two, you're leaving $35,000.
About that much difference.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven, thirty-one, sixty-three.
It was taken from the county.
Thirty-nine.
The amount less than federal bid is the 35, but the actual difference between what you've already approved and what they've been doing is 48,900.
Forty-eight, ninety.
The whole thing came back to this. Is this Mission, is this the group that would make or recommend that sold their equipment?
No, this is a completely independent company as well.
Yeah, there was another?
There was, and it was State Communications, which we did not receive the bid from because they excluded themselves. They said they would not be by us and would be interested in selling the equipment.
Is this be the last unbudgeted item for EMS this year?
And, you know, this is more emergency services versus emergency benefit services. Two different.
My boy, yeah. Okay.
The guy with the hat.
Me, yes. We have motion from Mr. Tate, Second Mr. Tate, to approve, I guess, rightfully approve the additional pedestrian allowance and excursions to Mission Porters.
And I assume the application withdraw the authority in the contract here.
And that may be taken from the state wishes. Any other discussion on that? Here, none of us favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Dave. Under new business, we have Sheriff Robbie Hall, and also the interment manager, Mike Decker. This will be the bids on the toll vehicles, and gentlemen, we can have that information in the package. Sheriff.
Basically, this is the funds that you all approved back in the July budget, and Franklin Ford has received, we've received the lowest bid, and Franklin Ford was the hard dealership that supplied the lowest bid. We're just asking for you to accept them as the bid.
And usually, Mr. Chairman, this is not brought back before the board. They have to assume the low bid unless there's something wrong with the bid, it's not brought back before the board, can we? And I guess for the information I don't have.
I think it is appropriate for the board to...
Since you're actually interviewing.
Yeah, it's a formal bid, I think the board should.
That's my other statement.
This is six vehicles.
That's correct. We have questions.
Under 90,000.
Take second. Any discussion?
What was the amount we had?
One seventy-five.
One seventy-two something.
Yeah, one seventy-two.
Bid one close three times, seventy-eight. Franklin Ford, we have Brian Rowers from Franklin Ford here to be comments, Mr. Rouse.
No comments.
Appreciate the low bid.
Thank you.
And that is under the budget amount. Any discussion? Here, none in all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. We have next item on the agenda is N.D. that would be the Spring Gate treatment with U.S. Geological Survey County Planner, Matt Mason.
Thank you, gentlemen. I was approached a few weeks ago by U.S. G.S. to do this train monitoring along the Wisconsin River, in cooperation with Duke Energy, like a monitor, seeing if the load and the ore was letting me down. What they're asking is, tonight, is to get that present agreement for them to allow the Spring Gateing station at the Frog Headquarters, which is the building right across from Western Plaeger.
Yes, thank you.
They're also in the agreement requesting a site across the river on the Greenway side, that's across, and that's like one percent.
Gentlemen, clarification, what was in your agenda package was the parcel next to Frog's Headquarters, and today, I think Matt got an addendum to that request to not only allow it from one side of the stream, but from both sides of the stream if necessary. And I have passed out to each of you a copy of the revised revised page that you received in your agenda package, which identifies two sites instead of just one.
These words, yeah?
Sorry. You said you... Yeah, it should be, and those pile packers should look like that. Here's an expert if you need more.
Is he?
No, sir. Gentlemen, that's kind of a sensitive area down there. I suspect you'd be inclined to do this, but there's a couple of things that would need to be checked into before we did it. First of all, it appears that one of those sites could potentially be the Duke Energy right away. Now, I understand Duke Energy is interested in this project going forward as well, so it may be just a matter of paperwork, it would be to do, in any case. Second, there's a potential for one or both of these sites to be within conservation areas, we need to check that. And then, third, we've got to get to the bottom of whether or not we've got lease arrangements. Thoughts? As if there is, they do.
So what's your explanation?
If the board is inclined, no, if the board is inclined to go forward with this request, I would just simply make it subject to the county attorney determining that we don't have issues with the, like, in regard to that.
Matt, describe what these would look like.
What does it look like?
Basically, it's just a box, like, you must do, just you put a monitor out the string, it's going to put water into the box, it's not going to be a big thing. It's just a...
The one out at, on the, part beginning, go out behind the base, it's constantly sitting out there all day. They sit there.
Versus Georgia, they sit there. To breed cattle.
Yeah, so that'll just be a little white box sitting out there. It's hunters.
So we're not responsible, no maintenance, so did you have a power source?
It does, it's not a power source, they're working two hundred and thirty times under the law, and all the time you're working, okay.
Do you want to say the power being used there? There is some excavation in place, and all the leases down there, the extent of the fate, we've got to get permission.
Has anybody on that, going to give their, 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 yeah?
As far as I know, they're not. We've got to maybe set for next Tuesday, or June, and we can discuss the next one. I think we're a station, still wanting to talk to them about, I'm looking at it somewhere.
I think they got a late flat.
You're on that one, sure.
Yeah, I don't think that is, I've got an obligation, I'm on the, yeah, town this one. It is, at 3:30, I'll check, I'll see if they're sure of that.
I think anybody that has an interest, it may need permission from, in all likelihood, it would be very supportive.
So do you need a motion, Matt, for approval, this board, the first? If we need to do it in the fifth board, fifth board has to approve it for any of the other actions. I think what Chester suggested, it be approved contingent on our attorney checking out.
We get any requisite approvals that we need to do. In accordance with the revised Page One.
Motion by Commissioner Haven to approve with the approval of our attorney. Second, here, none in all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, gentlemen.
They live in Young, everybody, they're like your mom. Cold hard.
No, they don't, they don't eat it. He needs a haircut, though. Thank you, Matt. We have a change order for Swiss Colony, we have, that would be Lori and Mike.
Ms. Hall, I had a chance to sit down with Ariel Haynes, who's a real representative on this project. Initially, this kind of called our attention, because the first, the last phase, I think they sent to us was, let's just say it was out of line. And so, we sat down and had a better conversation about the need for a change order for this move, for a pay application. Several things have gone on here. One of the ones that I guess gets the most attention, they intended to tie this new system in on the river bend, learned that they only had a three-quarter inch service there to tie it in on, so they had to move it back over to the office side of the project, which is Arthur Drake, where there's a brand-new six-inch line getting tied. The result of doing, having to do all that, apparently, cost us 63 million. And the bulk of the other change order itself, the big ticket on was really a significant amount of additional gravel that had to be used to resurface some roads that were rather soggy. One thing I did want to point out, too, the town of Franklin had already gone in there and installed almost $20,000 worth of new water. Had they not done that, you could have tacked that on top of, to this change order. So, bottom line, change order for $24,857.86. I'm talking to Lori, I understand the funding within the project to...
It's pretty bad, isn't it? Thank you for this app, on a quick 103 quarter.
They haven't get this right. The Gill also designed the blind end of the river. Yes, the Gill. And they also designed the one down the road off the track, so... I'm shocked, it's a big time.
You don't know your, as a contractor, you know when you get gravel before.
Well, this goes back a long time, but if this goes back, we made a proposal for the town of Franklin, the county had. The county's putting its money there, the town of Franklin's going to save the benefit.
Oh, that's fine.
We understand that. But we got this opportunity to approve their road proposal off the track. We got this to be a prime opportunity to do that. Involved in that was a transfer of property, they would not do it. They would not transfer the property, to see if they built a new station that now. They once landed the county on, and in lieu of that, we wanted to give mine. That's just a little bit of history of this thing, it's come back a long time. To know that, I just don't understand how you can miss one, if you designed them both, how you can miss one. The bottom line is, these folks now have decent water service, and the road is better than the one, so that's the bottom line. It's not fixed, it's better than the one.
Okay, right, yes, there we do get constant tease, and I see us.
If it's different companies, it could be, ultimately, they've done it all their life. If it's different companies, and you didn't see the plans on there, that'd be a little different story, right, from what we're doing here. If it's the same people, I just give you a few.
Question? Recognization, action, motion.
Mr. Hayes, who meant this, my, I wonder if it's going to be filled, and where this $26,000 came from?
I think the legal sheet is a summary sheet attached to your agenda packet. Apparently, there was an additional six-inch ductile iron, if it was necessary, some additional two-inch PVC, those two items alone are going to get you to about $10,000. Again, most of the Dida canceled out by the new water service meter, but overall, I think they had a, intended for about $49,000 in gravel red repair, and ended up exceeding that, I believe, about $36,000.
How much is left, Lori, in the total?
In the grant funds?
If I'm reading this right.
Before this change?
Yeah, before this change.
Before this change order, we have about $106,000 in grant funds. So after this change order, we still have $81,000. And that's taken into account while we still owe the tenant a previous contract and what we owe the Gill. So it actually looks like I'm going to access grant funds, and we're setting up some of that. Because according to RL, I think this should pretty much be the last change order, is that there may be one coming, it may be a Dida, but it shouldn't be any additional.
I just want to go real deep. I don't like, will Dida be a grant?
Looks like we're going to be, you know, leaving about $80,000 grant money on the paper, in this change order.
Mr. Chairman, if the money's in the budget, and as much as some of us around the table have a question sometimes, would you have the money in grant funds? They do, these folks do have a better, certain people, Swiss Colony, they have better water supply, and the road has improved, so, and these contractors, they really need to pay it at the end of the day. They've done the work, they've abandoned... That's what they do to me. So I'll make a motion that we approve this last change order in this project, before we give...
Your motion in second, in discussion?
If any way that we, if they had something in there guaranteed, that's the last change order, it's a little longer, but it's, it's an employee contract, for reasons.
It may be appropriate for mine, though, instead of seeking change orders, they really are getting approved before they do the work.
That's exactly right.
It's like what he said, the work's done, people happy out there, just, just tell everybody we don't quit changing, that's all.
I think that's a good strategy.
I think that'd be very appropriate for that, to be with them, this road, at that time. There was nobody around here in this room that would have worked for themselves, but you have change orders, and then fill it later. I think you can.
Okay. You can. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Here, none in all favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Tommy Jenkins, Officer, to the resolution, lease of the, of the director, Tom Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe what you have for you is a, a release for, maybe you're one of our tenants, I think they say you're a resident. You might know him as Electric Therapist. They made, they made good advances in the last year, and they've tripled their, made their, also, got buildings, given, as mentioned, why, because of building for the last year. So this will be their last year of the lease. Kevin Lee's, and then the bottom rung, there's somebody else.
Kevin, Mr. Jenkins kind of worked me on the preparation of the resolution lease, and he also provided to me the exhibit for Duck, which goes with the lease and resolution. I have a copy of that, this is the same as it was last time around. If you were to prove what was provided, you'd be within the package, you'd need to add this to it. This is an exhibit to the lease.
Recognization, approval, yes, say? Your motion in second, in discussion? Please, or you get that?
Good job, Tom, very good suggestion.
Appreciate it. We'll move out, have a hundred and forty.
I want to thank Mr. Chairman, I'd like to extend an invitation out to our business plan kickoff Thursday, everybody, big thousand, big business plan, I'll pitch you all the five thousand dollars, and so, that's a nice surprise, and, 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 and sponsors, and, 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 and,
We have both, second, please.
Second?
Second, by Commissioner Hayden. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you. Bill was going to say Greenway ordinance, uh, and Chester, that is yours.
It is. I have presented to each of you a copy of a proposed amendment to the ordinance. You recall, brought to your attention, what I thought to be the Todd Graffalera that had been brought to my attention. Uh, went back and double-checked with the ordinance as it's originally passed, and low and behold, the Todd Graffalera that I thought we had was not the fact of the time. And this is just correcting that, Dr. Riley, lost her.
So the mistake, without the mistake, the problem's like, so now we're correct, mistake is both.
That's right.
About a west, five West Main Street.
Okay, so what do we need to do, Chester?
Uh, you need a motion to approve this amendment to the-
I'm, I'm confused, I sound good today.
So I second that.
Motion second, uh, by, uh, Hayden Beal. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gentlemen, the, uh, next item is the consent agenda, and I think everything is attached there. We have the minutes of our October eighth, fifteen, seventeen, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and then we're at the fourth. Meetings. You have, uh, budget numbers forty-nine, fifty-four, which you have in your possession. You have tax releases, which, uh, are also in our package, which amounted to five thousand dollars and change. And then, I think for information, must we add more tax collection report? I do not think that requires board action, so that actually would not be a part of the consent agenda for information. So items A, B, and C, a motion to approve those to be in order. If you would like to remove one of those items, please state that.
So moved, gentlemen.
We have a motion to approve consent agenda, items A, B, and C. We have seconded by Commissioner Decker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. We have, item number twelve is planning the work. We have one seat. It's but on that board. Somebody get this information on that case. Dave, aye. Jimmy Goodman's term on board is expiring. Uh, Mr. Goodman did not, uh, turn enough patients, seeking to be reappointed.
Uh, I spoke, he just kept turning applications.
That has been, you know-
I think the policy has been, anybody wanting to be considered needs to apply.
Oh, maybe he's not aware that that was, I mean, if it's a city board member, but he has expressed concern in your service. I think he's done two terms.
He's always done one, so he's eligible.
He's eligible, he reported, and he told me, asked me, I, I thought his time was up, the way this was, but he said he could, he would-
But I think, I think the policy also comes from, like, y'all, putting notice out that you got an agency from your kid. Well, he, he wants to be considered, I think, he too.
Well, there's just delay act, not the, the application.
I knew he had for an application, I left him a voicemail this morning, early this morning. Expressing that, I haven't heard back. Doesn't mean that I've got my message, I'm not sure.
Matt, we, being a great issue, we just delayed you. But if you think you should apply this, I think it's fair to, just, just, just get it off on that page. We have a discussion. You guys, you're okay with it? All right, move on.
I have one other, and I think it's maybe in the same vote. Uh, if you remember, we talked about upon the South, uh, Southeastern, uh, Southwestern Agent Kempson. And I talked to Andy Fur, Andy, who went on knee surgery, and he didn't know if he could have served or not, but he has since come in and said he would be proud to continue his service. So, that's one of them, it's not like the planning board, you won't get a whole host of people wanting to serve, so the pleasure of the board, I guess, Mr. Chairman. But I would certainly recommend that, uh, if this girl wants to continue his term, uh, their president, their shore, will have him go through the process, but if you want to get no application, it's, it's fine.
But he would, he would-
Yeah, I agree, they have, I think we're going to be consistent, let's have him put in, I, I, my opinion.
Let me ask, Mr. Chairman, Tom, that you're trying to, did other applications-
I have, we have- I saw Mr. Shilling. Mr. Shilling was the last person to submit an application. Prior to that, Ben Lassiter had applied, and as you keep going further back, uh, we had, uh, applications from David Culpepper, Mike Riverman, and even way before that, I believe Rick Snyder, but I'm not sure Mr. Snyder is still in the campaign.
Dan DeGee had, had an application.
Dan, Dan had also applied.
I think we need to, they need to re-up their, if Mr. Shilling's interested, does he need to? He, he just, this was, he just did that, or this was September tenth together.
You said that was advertised somewhere, Chester?
Well, I was just going to ask for recollection, my recollection is failing me about the policy, but I was thinking that we were going to put these appointments, uh, give some notice of these-
Oh, I'm sorry, there's, there's, there's been a whole list of these appointments, including the planning board, on the website.
That's what I wanted to check and see.
Okay, it's been up the last six weeks. It's been there, it's- I, I would do this, Mike, since we're, we're giving Mr. Goodman some leeway to, to reapply. If he didn't realize, can't do that. Contact him, ask him to do that, and maybe also take that opportunity to contact him, Officer Shilling, if he's, if he's in.
Go back and make sure everyone's still interested.
Are you still interested? We consider all the things, so I think that's fair.
I know.
And we'll put that back on position.
Yeah, we need it.
Um, can you print this, I, I should know this, Mike. Can you print this application off the web, and I have to take it down?
Yes, sir.
So you can print this off the website?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, we have a, uh, a closed session.
Cemetery.
You got a cemetery, you come over.
No, I missed that.
Oh, okay.
Lord's approved Robert.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve Robert Shute. Hayden, excuse me, Detective Pigden in, uh, we feel. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's informed Robert Shute to the cemetery court.
Not the cemetery.
Not the cemetery.
That's the abandoned public cemetery?
Yes.
Yes.
We admitted that one, that is the- The abandoned?
Abandoned public cemetery.
Yeah. Gentlemen, we have a, uh, a request, uh, assault our attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege, something so forth. Under North Central Statute one thirty-three dash, uh, three eighteen, one one, A six.
So, as well as personally issued prayers.
We have a motion, we have a second, we will approach that.
Say.
That-
No, we have a motion, six to come out, gentlemen.
I, I would not expect an action item, I think we, uh, board, uh, that if we do, we certainly welcome to be here. I don't think we belong. Uh, all in favor of that, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Thank you for being here. Feel free to stick around as long as you like. I'm planning to be here longer, but, you know, I'm a bit, I don't know, like, or, just, I'm like, predators, like, yeah. Yeah, I, I let it. Folks, I guess we should press folks, we, we discussed in closed session, two issues. Uh, first, we discussed the, um, landfill and the issue that, uh, Commissioner Hayden brought to us. There are decisions that need to be made, uh, regarding future development of the landfill. Uh, that would be, I'll call that cell three, the next cell. The cell that we have, uh, is limited years, and we're going to have that discussion with the Solid Waste Director. And we are probably going to have to start development very soon on that cell. And we have some decisions to make as far as how and when to proceed with that. And so we'll meet with the Solid Waste Director, we'll meet, uh, next Monday, uh, the eighteenth. Eighteenth at six o'clock, with him.
It may or may not, it may or may not be.
But that'll be an open, it'll start out in the morning?
We will.
I'm assuming that's in afternoon.
Six P M.
You never know.
Uh, so that, that is the first issue we'll deal with. The second thing we talked about was the hiring of the county manager. And I can share with you, at least at this point, uh, the board has narrowed that search to two candidates. Uh, after lengthy discussion, um, frankly, we did not have, uh, three votes for the one up, but we had, uh, general consensus that either we make a good county manager, we feel like we have two excellent choices. Despite of, in light of not, not moving forward with one other, we agree that we're going to call both them back in for a second interview. And we're going to do that on that same evening, that'd be Monday, uh, November eighteenth, and that will be sometime after we discuss things with Mr. Collins, seven A clock.
So motion recessed to the eighteenth?
That's what we need.
Say.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like five, we're-
Appreciate you, sixteen. Five West Main Street, Franklin.